Zoom out the view. Or are we all there, but it's only just happened that bit?
It just was trying to start already, you know.
Yeah. Jack. There's that message at the top, Gareth, please, that blue band. We'll just wait for another couple of minutes, whatever it is, minutes and a half. Doesn't mind my voice, does it? Testing, one, two, three.
It's always me at the moment.
Yeah. It's picking up, yeah. Then it didn't go any further. One, two, three, testing. One, two, three. Well, the six o'clock, ladies and gentlemen, and the captions are working. Stage one complete. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our first meeting for an awful long time back in the chamber. It's very nice to see everybody face to face rather than looking at the computer screen. I want to look down to see your office here, but I can't see anything. Do we want to change that picture on there for the bigger picture? Because nobody else is showing up on that. You just click on the picture graphs. We don't stay without your big picture, we don't. Just because we know what, yeah. Okay, then, statements from the public. I have no announcements to make apart from welcome back to the chamber. So, welcome back to the chamber. And we move on to statements from the public. Do we have any statements from the public? Approach the gathering here first. No, I've asked online. Your questions, no statements from the public online. Apologies from absence, Gareth, do we have any apologies for that?
No, we're trying.
Brilliant. Declaration of interests. I have a declaration of interest, I'll start you off on that one. One of the items further down, which actually, bear with me a second, I'll just get it up on my screen here. There's a complaint being put in for an event in the town hall. I'm involved with that, kind of involved with that. My interest in that.
Actually, we'll discuss it though, we just noted.
We're only going to note it anyway, okay. Anybody else to declare any interests?
No.
No. The minutes, the minutes from last meeting.
We've got two sets checked, but the annual meeting and the quarterly general meeting. And you also have the 19th of April, if you don't mind signing, they were approved, but about to be able to physically sign now, so. Yeah, we can do the signing at the end. I propose that we accept.
Are we all in agreement, whoever proposed that they were correct?
I propose that we accept the meeting.
Second then. In the last minutes.
Again.
Again. Now, notice of election for the co-option. We've got six candidates. We've got eight candidates as well. And we've got five positions, so there's going to be a series of voting going on. It's. Thank you very much.
Second now.
So we're going to do it by ballot. And a clerk has very kindly created some voting papers for us. This could be a lengthy process, but it shouldn't be too painful.
Take a couple and pass them round. Explain what you have to do after an absolute majority.
In this case, you have to have three. The absolute majority, five votes.
So you vote with all five votes. Then tally up the votes. If in the first instance, nobody's got three, knock off the lowest one and then we re-vote on that one vote. Until they get something with three, then we pass on to the next. Paying six, paying process, still five votes. We continue all the way through till we've got all five candidates. So I vote for one or more. You vote for, you vote for, yeah, when you've got five votes. But you use all five votes.
We're going to be, oh, might as well pass them off.
So if you want to do your first round vote, for the first.
You can take any five each, right?
You just. You've got across in five, or one, or two, you've got up to five votes. You don't have to use a ballot every one time, that you probably will need.
Meeting in the council chamber, Jane. Can I ask people who are online to mute the microphones, please? Thank you. Six, it's just six, four, an absolute majority. Right, so first round vote, please.
So you can use five, two, three, one, whatever. When you've finished it, you can ask them.
Getting rid of Shane.
He used to play on my grandson, with the English.
Yeah, he used to, yeah, every weekend. From Martin.
He used to be, I think he's improved.
Two years ago. I see, I've got as well. Barbara. I don't think his captions work. I was picking up really strange words. So this is the first time we've tried the voice to type recognition. Whatever you call it, speech to. Isn't it? Voice to type works, doesn't it? Your accent's not, no, obviously not. Well, I've got to say, it's not racist in any way. Strange words.
Okay, so we have a tie. I have to print my sheets the way that's going. So there are four votes at the top. Mr. Sheriff Aaron, Miss Martine Roberts, and Dr. Yvonne Ryan. The lowest votes were for Mr. William Evans and Mr. Joshua Pulling Jones. So if you can now vote, if you can delete Mr. William Evans and Mr. Joshua. Yeah, Mr. Joshua Pulling, because they're equally low. And then re-vote again.
There we go, can you just recap who?
So you delete Mr. William Evans, Mr. Joshua Pulling Jones.
Including the people who were at the top?
Yeah, yeah, just freeze up again.
That one, absolute majority. Two, five.
Two, okay, yeah. Turn around, you don't vote for one. Don't we have to phone?
It's background music, isn't it? It's music. Sound of the music.
And that's right. These are going to be, yeah. That's, it's a lively, lively movement, it's a, it's a background movement, number six, seven. You missed the first.
Gareth, you've got to be telling them. Looking, playing weekend now, isn't it? It's on first. But you win the, when the people say, isn't it?
Right, the next vote. People take off. We need extra phones, is government? Three hands. Mr. Evans, Joshua Pulling Jones, Yvonne Ryan, and Catherine Suzan. Delete William Evans. Joshua Pulling Jones, Yvonne Ryan, and Catherine Suzan. Who's the last one? Catherine Suzan. You're now voting for Mr. Sheriff Aaron, Mrs. Wendy Willing. There's only five shows, Martine Roberts.
This is working correctly.
No, there's only five left, isn't there?
Well, there's now four left.
We, there's only four left now, we'd like people to cancel. First vote. We've got an absolute majority. We haven't got an absolute majority.
From the top two, we should have voted out of the top two.
No, 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 we are doing it right. It's, it's, we've got two votes now. But here's, we've got five votes, but two crosses. And then this will be, we've got to keep on doing this until.
I have to read you some of these.
So we've got, we've got five candidates.
Five, five, now five votes, so if you want to vote twice for a candidate, it's not a problem.
Sorry.
Yeah, this is quite confusing. So we've got five votes, four people. Yeah, so if you think you've got five votes in one box.
Yes.
Five boxes in one.
Hang on. Who were the four, who's dropped out? William Evans, Joshua Pulling Jones, Yvonne Ryan. Oh, Yvonne, I'm sorry. There's been a combo, all for one. Yeah, we all vote for one.
Hope they can speak for us, I don't think.
Just swapping the number then.
In essence, a single, transferable vote.
Yes.
Without all the technology.
Yeah.
To be successful, you have to have more than 50% of the vote.
And you can't have a tie, absolute majority. Probably not. If we use this one.
The first candidate to be elected is Mr. Sheriff Aaron.
Okay, congratulations.
And you shall have to go left, right? Where I say it again, if you've got five votes, you can vote five, you can vote five for one, you know, four for another, two, you know, you don't have to split. Absolute majority, so you can put all your votes in the first round, it's one round of tips if you want. Okay, so who's out now, everybody? Five crosses against one box, and then that's your vote step.
Everybody, there's nobody out, we start from the beginning again.
Well, apart from Shay. I see, everybody's in, again. No, 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 Shay has elected, so now they're.
So the only one out is Shay. Shay, Shay is now.
We're going to do it, so Shay's coming. Well, an absolute majority on this occasion. Miss Marshall is the second candidate. Sarah Marshall.
But instead, if you're looking in, you've got a pseudonym. On his paper, the candidate three. And I may have to. Yes, I believe. Same again, just, you don't vote for Miss Marshall or Shay. Again, yeah. Yeah. After five, you don't want to use your five, obviously.
Happy to see, while it was inevitable, I'm happy to see.
Yes. Go to that one. It's nice to see a public on council. I was semi-retired, I was retired. Semi-retired, yes, 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 I've gone down to three days.
Three days or three nights?
You're not allowed alcohol. I did look that law up, and I got this.
I looked that down, Boris said, no, by the. We're all in the garden, he said.
We're in the garden, good to.
The balance is hanging up to its destination, John.
I think so, yeah. And he's having a bit of problem, probably some of the wicks in the hanging baskets. Seems to be all right.
The twigs in that will obviously form your little.
I'm tearing that out.
Just passing that.
We all want to take off the. We'll have a tension, yeah?
Yes, sorry.
Somebody's made a mistake here. Voted for. I made a mistake. Down, sorry. Right, on this round, it's Wendy Willing to be appointed. Congratulations. You're other. So now, delete the Ferrin. Miss Marshall. And Mrs. Willing. You've got Mr. Evans, Joshua Pulling Jones, Martine Roberts, Dr. Yvonne Ryan, and Catherine Suzan. He's actually practised it at the last two days.
I'm not entirely sure I've got my head around how this works.
In the last place, one person of ten. The other votes for five, so it's an absolute majority. Check this, it looks like there's a tie between the two. Right, so all the systems, Dr. Yvonne Ryan to be elected.
Well done, you are.
Do that, yeah. Your last vote. So you would now exclude Mr. Ferrin, Shirley Marshall, Wendy Willing, and Dr. Ryan. And that's pretty fantastic, and that's a tie.
The exit was enough.
Right. Still five, five, still five. Here's on that, and. Miss Catherine Suzan has been appointed.
Congratulations.
For that, a couple of others.
Congratulations to all the others who tried and not succeeded, but thank you very much for all trying, because at least we've got a full council now. You're just formally announced, but. We have a formerly elected councillors' ar, Mr. Sheriff Aaron, Mrs. Wendy Willing, Sarah Marshall, Dr. Yvonne Ryan, and Mr. Catherine Suzan. Congratulations once again. Next item of business, let's file the financial reports. That's all we have. Well done, well done, Gareth.
Mr. Chad, I'd like to report to be first. Right, the annual return. I have circulated the annual return. For the new members, each year, it's part of the audit we have to do. It's in essence split into two sections. The first bit. The first bit is obviously we complete this annual return. So it looks at what our last year's accounts were and the end of this year's accounts. We then send this with a volume information to the external intern auditor. And the intern auditor has now sent the report back, as it says in the report. That they're happy about one or two small alterations we had to do during also the audit, which was. A portioning, I think it was expenses against salaries instead of against expenses. And then one or two other small things that were done during the course of the audit. And then the one outstanding thing which is on the report, which we will obviously. Take forward is to get receipts for any grants we offer to people. So it was a donation made to. Friends Penguin. And we have got any correspondence to say thank you, so that's something we'd have to ensure we get going forward. So apart from those. Those alterations or comments. If you're happy, what happens now is the chair and myself will sign this return. Then we send this then to the external auditor, Audit Wales, and they start the process of the external audit. And as we speak, we haven't had last year's yet, but they did take over and give a role during COVID. The process will be very similar, we have to show any variation above and below 10%. And we'll send it over with all documentation they require, then hopefully we'll get a positive audit back. So if you're happy on that basis, authorize the chair to sign, and we'll sign this at the end of the meeting. It's be sent out. Do we have a proposal for, correct, and a second, any objections to it? Proposed, John, a second. Yeah, that's right, so. Seem to have lost my. Fender of the month, I was. Lost my way. Um, reserves. It's this time of year again where we've come out of the last financial year. And again, you've had the report. Our policy on reserves is that we hold two types of reserves, you're not by law, you're not supposed to have any. If you do, you have to specify what you're going to hold for. So we have a general reserve and a specific reserve, asset reserve. The general reserve over time has built up steadily. And it's suggested you should have between three to six months of your. Income there, which I'm taking just to be our preset, we obviously get income off the, of the. Of tenants, but it all balances out. We were slightly short of that in the past, as you can see, and the asset reserve was quite low. At the year end, we did quite well. The pandemic was still a problem. And as a consequence of that, we. Were very cautious still on our spends. And. I don't know, I think I've got the wrong report here. There was, it was a bit like Manfred's say. Just strange coming back to the year, to a building which opened in for a while and you're still trying to put rent saving. Stop it, I'm in the wrong year. Yeah, so we were prudent on our expenditure and also we reclaimed unpaid rent of a number of tenants during last year. So that was in excess of our income. We also had. A significant refund from gas, four and a half thousand pounds. Because they'd been charging as if the building had been open during lockdown. And because of the roofworks. We've had 11,000 pounds in VAT, we can, councils don't annet of VAT. We're not VAT registered, but we reclaim our VAT, so that does also come into the accounts. So that was in a fairly good position. So the report then looks at where we stand. And as you can see, I've suggested that we could apportion some of that. And the spend into. Our general reserve, but even more really to strengthen our asset reserve. Because year on year, it's been like the fourth bridge, town hall, always. It's been the roof recently. The asset management group will have to consider again, the. The asset register where we're showing what works need to be done, but last year the hole in the roof, you know, blew it out of water. So we need to be conscious that we need a fairly good level of reserves. So in the last section now, you can see how we strength the reserves in four, three. So we've now got 74,949, which is equivalent to three months associated expenditure. And then an asset reserve is increased to 81,309, so that puts us in a good position. So if you're happy with that, if you have to recommend that we allocate those spends and VAT refunds. As detailed in that four, three of the report, please. Are we really happy with that?
I think you've. Please propose that.
Would you case it? I understand that. I've no idea what's been on that. And I understand the final figures, but I was only made up, it comes from the sheets we see throughout the year. Yeah, all of it's in cases, so. Is it followed through the year or in the long or sense in?
Reserves still bottom end of what's prudent, so we're not exactly being.
No, no, we're not being, we're being very prudent, you know. And I know you've turned a bigger town than us, but I know my colleagues there have got one and a half million pound in reserves. But I don't think we need that much, no, no, I think the auditor would be concerned if you're holding that much. But this level, I think, is sensible, given to the assets are. These will be, Cambridge reports come back, lots of pictures, lots of things. It scared me, but the actual report isn't that bad. But there's another example where, you know, we, that's the other asset we've got to maintain. The recreation ground and the China, sorry, recreation, Penbury Cemetery and the Centenary Square, the others. So we have got quite a lot of liabilities in terms of assets to maintain. So. Yeah, okay. Bank reconciliation, apologies here, I should have sent this to councillor Rush, because that's probably won't know, but the decision was made for the last, last council. But the deputy mayor that checked the reconciliation. And I need to, in essence, send you a copy of this. Does balance like that. I'm sort of happy that, subject to councillor Rush saying it's okay, that we. Prove the bank reconciliation. By law, we have to twice a year, so we do it every month, so we're not falling foul of anything. So if you're happy with that, we'll get the system set up. Excellent. And this is the described printer, isn't it? Yeah. Okay, first time to share, I hope. She's on now. Can't see our screen. Is that what's that? Content only. No, so you see it. Screen should be showing behind that, it's not. Trying to do two. Yeah, right, but I won't mess, I won't clear the pitch. Ah, is that connected to that? Yes, yeah, yeah, it should, it should share. Should be another window, shouldn't there? No, isn't it? What's the one with the mountain on the back of it, where the two screens are together? I might be hiding behind that, so yes, I know. Where are we? An authorized financial statement, so. I make it to be bigger, it's a. Just pause, it's 20.
You need to go back onto the original screen. People on the screen have been, I don't actually see them.
Is that, is that the case, or do they see what we see?
Yes.
So. I think they should see it. Should be seeing that, we don't see that. They could see. So as the chair said, this is, this is the, the net cost for cost centre, early days again. You see now we're saying that some of the cost centres have been populated with the expenditure. And the, as you'll know, can come to the next site and there's quite a lot of authorized payments this month, so again. So at the moment, it's early days, but as you can see, things are just slowly coming across, there's no, no red flags, nothing is. In any dire straits, because obviously. There's the VAT refund coming in, you see, there's the receipt, receipt is in. So at the moment, there's very little to report, but it's just for information. And if you have any queries when you get this, please make a note of them, we can go to the more detail each month. And anytime you want any further detail, I can also send you more detailed reports by cost centre, so you know exactly where it's going. So if you're happy with that, I will then quickly move on to without messing everything up there. There are a few changes to the authorized payments. Top staff from what was sent out has gone up a bit. I had to go and take documents for the internal auditor. They've got like a dead letter box at Pomplun Cricket Club, where they sponsor our auditors, so we go there and we meet. And then once you've seen the documentation into it. There's also. Just a bit of explanation. Where is it? Mr Sweetman's come in with the horticultural, which is with the. Floral display watering and then a second bill, and I always like separates them out because they are separate. 480, which is a battery for our bouncer, because the bouncer is handling water. And then again, we've had. Mr Williams. Some of his invoices won't be dropped off by the window cleaner, but when I say window cleaning, they clean the. The memorials as well, first and second room of the model and bus shelters. So that's about three months there of costs of window cleaning and the bus shelters. As one other option. We have Printing Solutions, second run of our Jitso newsletter. So that's now been printed and is when the printers are waiting to be printed. So those are additional to what went out, chairman, if members are happy. Can I just ask, how many, the 250? Eight hundred and fifty. Eight hundred and fifty. Double eight page. Back to back boughs, so. Because we went out to tender to get. Check and see how much the range of air needs to be managed in. So if anyone's interested in that. Yeah, so that's, so if you're happy to approve the authorized payments. Has ever proposed it for the, approve the authorized payments? No, and secondly, any objections? Okay. Terminal clock, it's an interesting one. We took over obviously the clock, or we took over the town hall in 2012. Since then, the previous, not the previous, the. Attacker prior to that was winding the clock at a volunteer capacity. And when our attacker left, George Hughes, ex councillor, was winding the clock. George unfortunately is unwell, so it's now fallen on myself and Charlie. And. To be honest, hadn't realised how dangerous it is really. As you can imagine, it's an old building, accesses through a very. Small door, about 80 centimetres, with a massive beam immediately behind, which is a structural beam, so you can't cut through to make the door bigger. And then a steep wooden steps up to the actual bell. Winding the weights is quite strenuous, particularly the bell weight, which takes a lot more to wind up. And, you know, as we said in the meeting the other day, we used to send children down chimneys. But, you know, in 2022, there are now auto winding mechanisms that can do this for us. So we went out to tender and the tender was to recognised companies that can work on tarett clocks in historic settings. There's code of, code of practice and we went with those companies. Of those companies, just, just to let you know, the top one there. Sorry, go too far. Richard White, although he didn't quote, he did pass us on to clockwise restorations, which is quite handy, as you can see as we go forward. Again, recognised as under the code of practice for tarett clocks. And as you can see, they've come in with a price of 5,450 for the auto white death, that would wind the, the. Time mechanism and the bell mechanism, it's two sets of weights together. They work on. Less weight, so presume is obviously like a turbo powered in the, in the winding system. So that makes them safer and any weights we don't use will be set to one side. And but then, of course, even if you do that, it still loses two minutes a week. Because it's pendulum, so there are other mechanisms, pendulum arrest and regulator can be fitted. And they'll then adjust that basis and also will slot the clock for an hour when the clocks go forward and restart when appropriate. So. There are two elements really, this is whatever we do, we'll have to make it safer for the access. The light is inside, if you're going in the dark, then you've got to put the light on. As I said, it'll still need some health and safety to have extra handrails and things to make it a bit safer. Because you obviously have a service element or if something goes wrong, somebody's got to go in. Now those works I would regard as, as revenue ongoing and will work, so they can be paid for out of our. Revenue account, our repair and new account. And then the others, as it's a structural expensive cost, shall we say, is more of an asset. Terms of clockwrinders, so this gesture is that that will be a catalyst and therefore that could be funded from reserves. So the recommendation is that we undertake those remedial works straight away to get it to the more health and safety compliant, as it were. You know, if, if George had been taken ill in the clock tower, it could have been quite serious. Fortunately, he wasn't. And then also, we then, so that would be done by a separate contractor. And then secondly, we appoint clockwise restoration to do the work of. Taking the auto winders and the pendulum regulator, and then those works will be charged to. If this member's happy with that, for any questions, we're happy to take it. Who's that?
I presume you've talked about the clock towers of just a building.
Yeah.
I presume then it would have to go through a plan, which is a building.
No, because we're not making any material changes to anything, we're just adding a mechanism to the winding, so we're not physically changing the.
What would that, what would that come under the handstrokes as well?
Well, we're, we're scheduled to. Yeah. Which is external view. Yeah. So we don't change in the external view. We, we won't be physically moving anything, we'll just be adding a handrail. We've got to put electric in.
Yeah.
It's electric up there and it's in metal casing and the old fashioned pipe at the moment. So I think that's got to be changed, I'm sure some of these places, we've just got to go to.
Would it be worth?
Different.
Just contacting the conservation in depth.
Yes, we can, we can.
Just declare.
Yeah, we can double check, but as I said, we, we're not doing anything that would, you know, we're not hacking anything away or physically altering anything. There won't be any visible changes.
Just, just the work and the development and the law has changed now that. It's not just on the outside and the respect of the stuff inside as well.
It depends what's listed. Yeah, we certainly do that just before we gather work done. It's a four week lead in time, but obviously we've got to get the electric connected so they can, excuse me, plug in. So we'll do that if members are happy to continue with the.
Scott question, I was just going to mention in the past, I will be complacent with the bells. And this mechanism, whatever you want to put in, it controls the bones.
No, if people want to stop the bombs.
Yeah.
And we have spoken to people about that. And I'm just trying to get that people see us a bit better, it seems we've gone on to a head height. And sorry, I'm just trying to get that people see us a bit better, it seems we've gone on to a head height. There'll be a, a strike, further strike mechanism, magnetic, which will hold the arm back at certain times. Now, that's a further cost on top. But if the, the query was made and the members agreed, on the basis of those, the costs would be covered by the people that requested it. Because apparently it was done, the hand paid for the church to have their silence at night.
I live in a hotel for eleven years, it doesn't bother me.
The magnets. My point in relation to that was, shouldn't we get the quote to include that work while we're all working?
No, because we're not going to be paying for it. We can't pay for it, so.
Okay.
You know, the decision was made that we're happy for it to be done. In fact, it was the last email that was sent on the 19th of March before lockdown to the people that had raised it, and said, we're happy to accede to having a night's silence, so that's what's called put on, but at your cost. And, you know, that's the situation, they're happy with that. I followed it up because we're going to go with this, and I was told that it would be passed on to another part of the organisation. They haven't made, they haven't been in touch yet, so we'll just wait and see. And then obviously, if they want it, I mean, we'll have put the electricity in, so that's one positive. There'll be the electricity to enable that, so that's, we'll have borne that cost as well, so.
So they got a time break of this, and the caller can come in any time they want to stop the bombs.
No, they'd have to ask us, wouldn't they? We'd have to agree to it.
No, it would probably be between 12 and six, something like that, it's just those ones. Or six, so they would restart at seven in the morning, it's just so people that affected. It's more people that come from all night, you know, it's like your first night in a hotel, you can hardly sleep anywhere. And then through the night, the bells go. So, you know, if you live there, you use, you know, the resonance opposite, and have that height.
Is it more of a nuisance?
It couldn't be argued that it's a nuisance.
You'd always be the supremacist. We've just got to get off topic at the moment. We're going to go to the nuisance and the needs that's called to you. Come back to the original. Because we can't wait, we're going off topic there, because we can't, can't get in with what we're discussing here, so. So do we have a proposer to go with? Well, there are two options here.
Should we do them together?
Should we do them together? So we've got a proposer for two together, a second for two together. Proposers are different?
Donations, we have a budget, annual budget for donations. Traditionally, we've always supported the International Stairway. And it's some time, obviously, the last few years, there's not been a call on that, on that, those sums of money. Again, small savings have been made there, which, you know, in our reserves. So now that the Stairway is back, shall we say, they've yet to get come and asked whether they could make contribution to the general operating costs of the Stairway. And as the report says, you know, it's the 75th year. They are coming back with a full programme of events. There's liaison with the Fringe on the Sunday events. And therefore, having supported in the past, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't support it again this year. However, last time, as the report said, we supported it, it was some time ago, and inflation has caught up a bit. Therefore, if we are to support it, I would recommend or suggest that we at least cover the inflationary costs to make our contribution still as valid. And then there's a second element, which as I say, has come out in the last hour. They traditionally put the flagpoles and flags up on the bridge. But unfortunately, as you can see from the report, this year the quote's gone up by 39%. An extra 1,600 pounds, which they clearly haven't budgeted for. And therefore, the Chair of Line has come back and has asked whether the council will be there to help with this single element. If you look at the justification, obviously, you know, coming back together, music, arts, culture, it's very important for post pandemic. And, you know, there's evidence of why people stay in local, things are slowly getting back, and they make a positive contribution to the local economy and to people's welfare and wellbeing. So on the sort of general grant, I think it's still worthwhile contributing, and that should, as I say, with inflation, it could increase to at least 1,800 pounds. The decoration of the bridge, obviously a lot of money's gone into the town hall the last 20 months, or whatever it is. That long, and seems like that. And it would be a shame really if for a relatively small amount of money, it's not that small, that we didn't have the bridge decorated for the Stairway. And therefore, we would have to find extra additional support if you're minded to support them to the tune of the 1,600 pounds, so that would then bring our total up to 3,400. We've got a budget to three and a half, at the moment, nobody else has actually approached us. But as we've just gone through this process of co-operation, and as the six of you were elected and opposed, we haven't incurred any expense on the elections. I've checked with electoral registration services, there might be a small amount happening at the beginning, you know, filling in forms, whatever, and all the stuff that was posted earlier on. But there should be sufficient funds in that to be able to vie across if any other donations come forth in the year. So the other advantage, and, you know, I've discussed it with several members of Line abbreviation. They get a cherry picker to put this up, later in the year, we get a cherry picker to put the Christmas decorations up. Get a cherry picker to take them down, they get a cherry picker to do other things. So I think there might be some benefit in sort of coordinating this activity going forward. That's right, my son's had a road traffic accident today, so that's probably, come back to that. It's his mother. Sorry, so, yeah, I think looking forward, if we can do some coordination and and if we just wait, that's what we go.
Do you want to say anything?
No, 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 that's fine. Yes, as I said, I think we could work closely, more closely, and get some economies of scale. So cross delay taking the flags down to when they put the Christmas decorations up, and things like that, so we're not paying constantly, you know, two machines and.
So when the flags go up, I think they go.
The track holds a boat.
Yeah, but they know, obviously, if they're a present decoration, but on weeks.
Yeah.
Go inside a little bit.
I mean, because we gave them all money before, they agreed to leave them up longer. So they're in the town till September, so whatever. Or we could say, well, let's keep them till October, try and get our decorations up earlier for November.
There's a problem with that, it's likely to be TV very quickly, and that's the news that's every year, the cost is.
Yeah, but, you know, we can hopefully, and maybe they'd be cheaper to afford to get and buy a cherry picker, rather than, you know, rather than buy one every year, buy one in every year, but, you know, so.
No other council's got one in. Get it to.
You know.
So basically, there are two elements to this then.
Yeah.
Denver should be one to do.
Denver should chat. Denver should quote it once and charge a lot more.
Yeah.
Three, the 3,400, 3,400 is 100 short of our annual budget for this, normally, as guys said, 2,000. And that is because of the election.
That coming back from the elections?
Well, as we, we had to budget 6,000, we were talking in advance, that if you enter a full, you know, polling cards and all of that, the staff coming in. Honestly, yeah, they're completely down. So that was 6,000 in the budget, and we haven't received any bills yet. But clearly, if it's anything, it's going to be hundreds, if that, it's going to be for the early. In fact, I don't think there'll be any costs.
You want to make a contribution to the county election, don't we, Brownwater?
No, no, we just pay for our poll cards, I'm publishing all the printing of these things to go in. So if it's anything, it's going to be hundreds, so it's, you know, it's definitely money there that we could ride around. Or alternatively, you could charge it to resolve, to charge it to the elections cost, the extra cost, and leave donations. Yes, six to one half does the other really. But if you wanted Nita, you could say the one-off payment would be charged against the election cost, you can resolve that. And leave the donation as it stands.
That's a bit messy.
Yeah.
Yes, actually, what I was thinking of it, there could be possibly three options here. One is to donate the 1,800, because we know what we do. One is to donate the 1,800 and the 1,600 proposed here, or the other one is to make a donation of a figure. So ask not all 1,600, but ask some of that. So say for instance, we decide to donate 2,500 instead. I'd like to see the full mountain, so it's a production. So personally, as being in business like other people, it is respectable. What we normally do in a situation like this, is we go around the table, and everybody has to say, then, so, thanks for that, that's nice. I'm happy for all of it, because they've always done it. I'm quite happy if the majority of you, if anyone says giving 60, I'm going on with that.
I think the flags play my major part. Livening the town, not having them, I think it would kind of lose that special point. We have been through a pandemic as well, and obviously they've struggled financially as well. So I think make the donation to the cost, put the flags up, and the donation to the rest, and then reevaluate maybe next year.
Yeah, I agree with Alan, I think it's, percentage wise, it's quite a big price tag, but I think the value of the town still.
To make, to make our town, along with our new paving, it will make it. Physically explore what I said before about the cherry pickers.
Yeah.
Last, we've waived the fee for the Esteban use of the town hall.
Is that the same? I don't think they'd be using much, that's, that's, that's still there, yes.
Well, that's not part of the, that's in addition to a catch by.
So do we have a proposer for any, or all? Those for that themselves, or then second, any deviations from that?
Okay, congratulations basically, listening.
Do we know when those flags are going up?
Because you know, it's a big suit, I have to buy money.
Bearing in mind, that's the management, we can be in ties to the Esteban. Shall we waive any charges?
Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate.
We're in agreement with that, that we, as, as a trust, yeah, we're always going to trust, we waive the charges of Donald.
Otherwise, we're given well handled, and then. Thank you, Chair, thank you, councillors.
We've got that, that's finances over, planning applications. Now, this is where, for the last couple of years, what's going forward is, I've been, we get planning applications in, getting them done. And I've been going on the website, we look up all the details of it, so I can give a summary to those in council about what's going on. Any, this one, again, I'm looking for, honestly, to take over from me.
As a member of planning.
So I'll go through them for now, and if anybody is interested in doing it, just clarify it with me, and then I can go through it with you. So first application is, they're all O3 2022, so it's 173 and 174 together, because it's a listed building application. This is the Royal Hotel. We went through this very briefly in March, I think it was, when it first came up. There's been a couple of updates, I mean. When I downloaded the documents, it was like 200 meds of documents almost, I couldn't just go through them all. But one of the updates I did find was, they'd proposed to put 10 bird and 10 bat boxes round, look after the ecology thing, because. But what we decided last time is that it's a major project and very complex. And from the plans that have been submitted, there's only cosmetic changes really, there's not just space being taken over by them, the entrances remain in the same places. So we, what we resolved to do last time is, is leave this to the experts in membership, to look at the planning. Rather than object to that council, though. Because it is a complex. Can I just ask, would you give me detail of when these, with this generic back box thing? So they're all available online. If you, if you look at, when we get the minutes, you'll see all the applications, if you want any, just ask for some questions, you look at those planning details then when we get them in, because I can't remember everything I've read. But that came from an ecology company, I can't remember what they were called now, who are experts in it. So I would, in fact, I do remember bits, the bird boxes had 22, 25 and 32 mil balls in.
Yeah.
No idea. But they'd be in strategic places, they won't be all in it, they would be like a terrorist rowing, I suppose. Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but, yeah, that's not up to us to decide, as a council, but I understand your concern, so. But perhaps you'd be the one to look into planning. I always sound like a volunteer, don't you? So we could take a vote on that, do we leave it to them, do we want to say anything about it specifically, or? I, I, this involves knocking possible the town. It involves a lot, a lot like that. My concern there would be that, just pedal to the earth, you know, so. That's all, I, I, I'm not sort of, bang, nothing else. I can't see I've been divorced that way, when I was effectively getting payments. I'm also not keeping statements that I'm hiding. Yeah, the mortgage, the FBA goes, all this, most of our land spaces. They're getting up half the space, despite what we've told, and we're going to lose some more for the duration in the build. And so.
Now, I don't know how we'd go about with things like that, Keith. There's no way that able to solve that.
There's highways that are smashed to pieces.
Yeah.
Why don't, on the pavement? Well, they'll have a duty of care as they build to make sure that they don't damage somebody else's land, and if they do, they don't have to reinstate.
Duty of care, whatever, do with it all on the bridge, smashing the bridge. I don't like it, I wouldn't be mindful. No, no, you would know.
And we had the bank stopped down, and we were doing the, the 70 square, which causes totally redesign quickly, bank, because we were cutting it back. While Julie's, literally, oven was shaking, and she was cooking, so they fell out. So that was a panic, so we, you know, but because of that, we had to quickly redesign, make a higher wall, more backfill. So, you know, there are considerate contractors, and we just have to hope that, that the, when they get the works done, they make sure that they don't damage the. But it would be a county council. Chasing them anyway, not us, but fairly confident that they are competent enough not to damage it.
So. Vision of social media coming alive, where there's a crap, pay, payments down there. But again.
Social media should be a bit more responsible.
We can't help that, can we? So in essence, then, we have, we've just let the county council carry on with it. That doesn't stop any personal objections going in, by the way. You can still go on the website, pass your own comments, or objections in.
But if you do, bear in mind, they have to be in terms of planning law.
Yeah.
Not just, I don't like it.
No, I don't like it, in fact, I've got something coming up here, but I'll move on swiftly. 368 Lander Cometto, this is, it's not exactly the same as the previous application many years ago, but it's for the direction of five light industrial units. So as you're looking at from the A5, at the new factory that's there, there's a service road going in, it's on the opposite side of that service road. It's from the Lachlan side, but it's opposite the factory. And the road, the roadway's been made in such a way to allow the piece of the. Um, and the road, the roadway's been made in such a way to allow some pieces of the future.
Understand it, uh, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, that, that is B one, B, uh, light industrial B. Um, five or wherever it is, um. And that field adjacent is for light industrial use, so it's within the local development.
The RDP, it's here. So, uh. Oh, sorry, where's he gone? So three, six, eight, I don't miss one actually, sorry. That's where I got confused. So. Uh, basically, that's, um, seems to be ongoing in the scheme of the whole thing, so we can't do much about that. I don't think that can be just about noted.
No, I mean, there's some, it's gone, sorry, councillor, have you said? Uh, there's no overriding planning reason not to allow it to fund, I think something to be encouraged.
You can only object on the certain laws of planning. There's a lot of alcohol in it.
No, no, it's always been allocated.
It's allocated at the time of the, uh, bypass. There's B one, B two, light industrial.
Uh, so three, five, eight, that's Minford, Mill Street. Um, it's just the change of use this and some internal works.
Hmm.
Uh, they, they want to make it a multiple occupation, occupation site for. Ten care workers at the headlands. So basically they're changing some existing bedrooms into en suite style and having a common living area. Uh, there'll be no objections for any of these. And Johnny, we killed the neighbour that's asked for qualification on people there, she's concerned about the noise going off. But as, as we said, there's no change in the outside of the building at all, so we, this is what we've been requesting.
I'm having an inquiry, um. Who's you're presenting? Uh, it's been widely touted, as been for, um, care workers. Is that because the people from the town nursery are purchasing the place?
He doesn't say it. Does he say, the application, the application that he does, you know, currently, so.
So it has a multiple occupation, isn't, it isn't enlisted, listed as specific for care workers, anybody can.
Okay, well, actually, what's the planning, decency planning have suggested, a five year temporary mission. So in essence, in, in essence, they've said, yeah, but let's just monitor it in case we get. Obviously, stuff to move in that.
But again. The people that occupy isn't a planning consideration.
No, no, it isn't.
So.
No, it's just a way of being portrayed in being in town.
If we have no objection, you're saying, you know, in planning terms, we have no objection.
I presume that this is going, is that the alleyway that comes up to the junction? There'd be a concern about the traffic. So you've got five extra vehicles going down. Approach onto the.
There isn't parking, that's ten vehicles, I'm guessing that they'd be walking. Walking to the.
And, and the bridges, the road there is wider than it would have been otherwise. Because when that Dutch couple originally purchased it. They, they compulsory purchased the end of the building because it used to come right up to the end of the pavement.
Okay.
And knocked it down, so that the thing is smaller as a result of that.
So no objection to that then. Um, four, seven, two is five Chapel Street, this is where the fire was, that affected five.
Hmm.
Um, basically, they want to knock down the back of it and rebuild it in same, same footprint. When he backs onto the hand, can't, so it's not. Struggling any bit deeper apart from the neighbours next door who seem to have a concern. Because they're adding it to the story to the back extension, one of their windows is overlooking their kitchen and their balcony. Thing about bedrooms, so she's got a concern about that, she's written it. I'd ask her to do that separately, but apart from that. I can't see any response to, to, it doesn't look threatening.
Well, we did, if you recall, um. Uh. Charlie Jones's former house, we had a similar. Situation and we actually, we actually said that we had concerns of overlooking, so we could again, we can, we can state, we can state that we're in favour, but. Uh, to address your looking, they may have to put a frosted glass window in or something like that. So we, we could, as a tradition, say, take a similar, similar statement to we did on twenty five Regent Street then.
Yeah.
Twenty five Regent Street, so we can, uh, um. Just acknowledge that we're happy with it, but there is this issue about overlooking.
I'm pretty happy with that.
Yeah.
Uh, Tannable.
Barbsill.
It's listed. Yeah, two again, because it's listed. Uh, funny enough, Phil Gale, who lives in Five Chapel Street, is where he used to live. Gale's just a builder. Uh, the people who bought it now, they want to take down the garage, boiler room. Basically tidy it all up, so they want a single story extension replacing what's there at the moment, so again, there's no. Oh, and take out a self-seeding tree. Which I haven't been up to have a look at it because it's on my ground, so I haven't investigated the tree. But, um. Again, it's a like-for-like replacement, but a bit posher looking at the plans. So I see no reason to. To, um, object against that one. But I'm in agreement. And the last one, O five. Three is the sports club at the top there. There are three, um, poles up there at the moment that the rugby use for training. They, they want to replace the lights with LED lighting. So it's, which like, I like, more efficient going down there. Is that the rule?
Yeah, okay. So what, what we do is we group the ones, the main notes from the minutes, and we say, in considered and in planning terms, we have objections. And then if there's, it is comment about the overlooking, we'll add that, you know, with the provise of that. And then, um, if there are things we want to, what would normally happen is I would go and look at the local development plan and come up with some. Uh, statements where it's contrary to the local development plan, so, but none of these are, so. That's how we do it.
Good. And then after that follows on with planning. Consider it a decision, for these here, we just note them basically.
Yeah.
Um, for instance, the very first one there, the Handel Hotel, if you speak, if you remember our last meeting, you said about cutting down the trees. Sorry, I'm going to think, Scott. It was strange, it might. It was what they far worse that actually was in the end. It's only a problem, actually, the way it was weird. So, so these, um, Fairway View, Holyhead Road, that was a listed application, Antinaphonum, Berlin Street. Yep, so they've, they've, they've all been granted. Really? Next, and then.
Head of legal, uh, correspondent, Chair, we've had, uh, a few, few letters. Mainly emails nowadays. And remembers if it's, uh, One Voice Wales or Circular, I'll tend to forward it. So you've got the information straight away and others, where we have to make a decision of the. The, uh, of the agenda. And with this one, uh. Full news, that's not in. Um, what is he, Colin, uh, some of you may know him, he's the Welsh tutor. Particular to the Welsh lessons here, very nice guy. Uh, he's been on the standards committee as, as the representative of town county councils. And, um, if you have no objection. Uh, Gordon is happy to continue in that role. And therefore the, um, head of Democratic Services and the Monarch Office, Gary Williams. Has approached, has brought all the county councils in Derbyshire to see if they're willing to support that reappointment. And if you're happy to do that, we can advise, uh, Mr. Williams accordingly.
I see it's a matter of formality, really.
Yeah, unless, unless there's anybody who wants to stand, obviously.
Trifterithin.
Case.
Occasionally once every quarter.
But he does post quite a lot on social media, he's also chair of the, um. Uh, what's it called? Health, local health council.
Right.
So he is quite, he does get a lot done. Uh, second correspondence is a letter of welcome to you all from our, uh, MP. In the office, it's just one standard letter, but I think it's worth noting that he's wishing you well. And if you want any support that he can offer, he's quite willing to provide that support if you want to contact. And then finally, on the correspondence, we have to note that, uh, we, we had a complaint about me going to the town hall and. Some actions that have, that have emanated from that. Um, we have a complaints procedure, so the process will be that now I will be investigating the stage one. Um, and that's where the. How can I say, that, that, that is purely on the operation of the council. Whether we did something incorrectly or if we, we, we've done something wrong. If it's a complaint against the member, I all of you, then that's an ombudsman's, um, uh. Position, you, you have to report that to the ombudsman. So if, if I find that there is an issue with, with the council mentioned, then obviously I would be saying that. There's nothing for us to deal with, that is a matter for the ombudsman. But I have to look into the, the other element of the complaint as to whether. Uh, as it was an event in the town hall, it's obviously a council building. And, um, uh, just to report that's going forward and any further action obviously will be reported as well if there is any. So that's where we are on that complaint, is just to let you know, we have to let you know that we could receive them.
And what are the kind of timescales and stuff once like that happens?
Uh, it's fairly quickly to respond, I've, I've made initial responses, I just need to formalise, I've had a letter now, so I really just need to, uh. Put it in writing. Um, and as I say, um. My understanding is that it's not really a council issue. Um, so without going too much at the moment, because I'm obviously going to hear from the other side when I get back. Uh, but there are things that need to be addressed perhaps going forward, but. That's the situation, right?
And that's something that will be raised presumably in asset management.
It'll be asset management going forward if we don't have asset management.
Yes, um, because of the set of councils, we did agree to wait until others were co-opted, so in the next meeting, we'll be appointing. People for the different councils, and it could be something on our website, actually, as to what they want to do, I think. Perhaps look at some, certainly in the meeting section on our website, there's, uh, minutes from previous meetings that we've had. So if you're interested in going asset management, for instance, I've written the minutes from that to see what the sort of things we discuss. Same with the, um, human resources.
Yeah, but I will be bringing a report because I think we need to come out. Particularly with the new legislation that came in, we're required to do certain things, I'd like to have bolster one committee and, uh. And I know the councillor, Russell, suggested communication, but I think, I think, I mean, I'm just sort of. Headlining next meeting, I think, um, asset management, so we'll stay as it is. Uh, I'd like to increase chips of even to cover climate change, we have a chips flow and climate change committee. And I'd like to change human resources to, um, look at management establishment, so that would cover. Management elements, like maintaining our policies and maintaining, uh. Uh, things like communications, our website, all that kind of stuff, and then establishment is the, like, the staffing side, so. It's just, because as it was, it. I think you were on, on the human resources, it was very much just.
Are the council, uh, are the council able to hear us at the moment?
Yeah, but you shouldn't be speaking.
Yeah, you're not allowed to speak.
Raised a hand earlier and, uh, I think it's still raised, but I don't think anyone's noticed.
Yeah, sorry, the, 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 where the public are allowed to speak at the beginning of the, of the. You're not allowed to speak now, I'm sorry, can we meet them?
Yeah, you're not allowed to speak whilst the meeting is, but after the public session. You had, you had, you had an opportunity.
No, no, we understand that completely. Um, we've tried to join you from France, which is where we are at the moment, and the internet connection is very dodgy, I think is the right word. And when we tried to join at the beginning, unfortunately, it didn't connect, so we missed that opportunity, otherwise we would have obviously spoken at that point. So I wonder if the council would be prepared to, uh, listen to a question from us at this stage.
Well, we, we can listen to a question, but we can't promise to answer it.
Uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you, um. Uh, does the town council agree that it owes a duty of care? To our Ukrainian refugees are, that are being hosted in Langoffland and sponsored by Derby County Council?
Lovely question. Uh, yeah, we, we, obviously, we, as the chairman said, we'll note that question and we will bring a report to the next meeting. On that basis, and we will discuss it then.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, obviously, Kim is, uh. Looking forward to being interviewed by your case investigators. In due course, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, thank you.
So am I to understand that that is these.
That's the complaint, yeah.
Well, he was a little inappropriate that she's spoken to on that subject.
It's that towards unfortunately.
Um. Well, we've, uh, uh, we've noted that, and I say we will bring forward a report on, on whether we have a duty of care to our. Our Ukrainian man. Geez.
So, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, online and in the room gathering, congratulations once again.
Um, I. Next, sorry, councillor, no councillor. Edlers is here, it wasn't a slot, because I knew you. Still fairly fresh, I don't know if, if.
You could have said.
I remember fresh and knackered. Whether you've got something to say or, um.
Well, we're still in the train, I'm training at the moment, but, uh, I, this is informing that I'm now, you know, to school to me. That must be also on the final, in the democratic services. I mean, appeals, I don't know, um, how to handle this tension.
I've got, I haven't got, I've got it in here somewhere, but I'm on it. I'm on it, because you started with, you want me to say. License in one. Um, the, the Welsh language and culture is another one.
More scrutiny.
More scrutiny, so the scrutiny of the camp, of the county council is another one and one, and.
So this is for.
That's it. And the books it, so we, we've both got four diverse units there that we can all monitor. Then it is providing these services to us all in, in all of.
So from next, next meeting, there will be the standard.
The council's report, there's normally a, a gentleman on that.
Um, I don't know, the, uh, the council have received the, um. Have, regarding the, uh, the G D S, we're also like, we're part of it. And I don't know if there's any more further based on our, um, sort of awards, so maybe this is not happening yet.
Well, I have replied in.
Is this, is this meeting now closed?
This meeting is now closed, sorry, yeah.
We're in a general discussion.
Yeah, no, start recording. Yeah, technically, we can't discuss any terms of stuff, agenda. Um, and.